While this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board took order, today is January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. We are meeting in the, I don't know what they call this, it's a municipal of something, large meeting.
Is there a smaller one?
Yes.
We'll start off with the, with the approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have public comment. We have two pen, we have one pending application Vinegar Hill Music Theater. And we have a new application, American Iron and Metal Major Conditional Use Renewal Application. And then we have some town planners business to report to us, and then we're all going to adjourn and go home. Sooner rather than later, right?
We have the board's speaker, it's great.
Motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane. Any discussion? While those in favor?
Aye.
Lest I forget, I should do a roll call. Start at that end.
Marty? You go first.
I don't vote.
Oh. Marty Kane.
Susan Senate.
James Lowry.
Paul Green.
Bob McGinn.
Susan Rodd.
And Richard Genon, we do have a quorum.
Usually takes a long, everybody.
Approval of the minutes of January tenth.
Make a motion that the minutes be approved as written.
Second.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Senate, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. The next item is public comment. If you are here in the public and you wish to address anything that is not on the agenda. Now is the time you would do so. And seeing the vast horde that is jumping up and racing for the mic, I'll assume you're all here to discuss the applications. And we will move right on pending application. Vinegar Hill Music Theater Major Conditional Use Application, Vinegar Hill Music Theater Site Plan Application. A proposal to use an area for an outdoor entertainment venue to include accommodating up to three food trucks, as well as the establishment of a banquet used for weddings and other public events. And who's making the presentation?
Good evening, Chair Genon, members of the board. My name's Brandon Mazer, I'm an attorney at Perkins Thompson, representing Vinegar Hill Music Theater. I'm joined this evening with Craig Cameron, Emily Heranis, and Michelle Bundy, who can also assist me in answering any questions that may, may come up this evening. So it's been a long road. But we're here before you are with a site plan application for a number of things. I've been working with Jim Nagel, the Town Attorney, Leah Rachin, and Lee Jay over the fall and early winter to bring forward this, this application. What we're really trying to do is three things. One, expand the existing septic system. Two, seek formal approval for the outdoor stage that has had events throughout COVID. And then three, seek approval for additional out, outdoor events, the, the movies, the outdoor banquets, and other, other bike events with food trucks. In conversations, and you'll notice in the application with town staff, it was determined to actually apply as part of this application for the food truck permit to make life a little bit easier for Vinegar Hill and the town, rather than doing it on a, an event by event basis. How often those events will actually happen with that many food trucks will, will probably be limited, but it was determined it was easier to, to do that all as part of this application before you tonight. So really, we're here to discuss anything that, that you think needs to be added, not needed. You'll notice in the application, there are a handful of waivers that I discussed with Mr. Feldman in that really nothing at the property, other than the septic and getting formal approval for the stage is changing. So you'll notice, you know, waiver for the signage, nothing is contemplated to change with the signage. Mr. Feldman has requested that we remove the note of the additional parking needed across the street. We've, it, we were able to meet the standards as is with the current. We do have the ability to work with the vet across the street if needed, but we, we actually don't need it under this application. So that's, we're happy to remove that. Mr. Nagel has signed off on the HHE application, which is for the septic. We are ready to install that. We got a little delayed this fall, and now it's really contractor availability dependent and weather dependent. So it's likely not going to be formally installed until this, later this spring. But that's been signed off on. And really, we're here to have, have a conversation, see if we can get a completeness and then come back. Hopefully next month or, or two and, and for a public hearing. We do have a number of public comments, letters and support that we forwarded to Antwerp and Lee Jay earlier today. We're happy to print out eight copies of the full packet for the public hearing, but I'm hoping you all receive that electronically. And otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Who's got questions?
I do.
Have at it.
Okay, so I have a few.
Sure.
One is, what is going to be the event schedule? When are you planning on openings? Saying in a perfect world, you've got everything you need in the septic. When are you going to open? And when do you expect your season to close?
So the, the current season and what is expected really is sort of that April to late October, except for a few outside events, outside that window, Halloween. They often do a prelude event and a couple fundraisers, but they're on seasonal water for the most part. So it's really at April to end of October with one or two events in, in the winter time. And then, and then sort of shut down for those three or four winter months.
Okay, my second question is, you didn't want to do a traffic study because you said that the number of attendees to your various events is going to remain fairly consistent or constant. But if you're having weddings and other private events there, isn't there an opportunity to have a fairly large event? Or are you going to limit the number of people who can actually hold a banquet at a wedding there?
Yeah, we're actually, yeah, and we're actually, good question. We're actually capped out both from a fire code and from, and this came up in a discussion with Jim Nagel, a septic, this is the size of the septic. So we are capped out under the two hundred and I think fifty for the indoor events, all outdoor events. We, we can't hit that number anyway. So I believe the number is on our HHE two hundred was
Two sixty.
Two hundred and fifty, I think, Lee Jay.
I want to say actually, I want to
P two eighty.
Four.
Okay. Trying to find the, the septic application. Um, it wasn't part of the, was in this, but it, we would be capped out at what we're currently doing for indoor. So there is no increase because of, of a wedding venue. And in fact, for the, if it was an indoor wedding without the tent, the way that the, the tables and the chairs are set up, it's correct, we capped out of one fifty, one, one, one twenty-five.
That should be codified in some, somewhere in your documentation, including what your normal season is. And then that's just my personal opinion, and I think it, then we all know what your limits are. And we know that they've been discussed. And everything's been transparent. So the only other question I was going to ask you is about the food trucks, because there was a sentence that was really interesting. And it said, all food trucks must be attended by the operator when they're in use. And the implication, or at least I thought the implication was that they're going to be parked there permanently, but they didn't have to be attended, attended when they're not in use. So my question is, are the food trucks going to be a permanent fixture on the property? And if so, I think you should say so. And also, I'm just interested to know, do you guys own part of the food trucks that are going to be at your events and serving food?
So I, I believe, and I'll turn to Craig for a comparison, but no, the, and I'm not sure what, if that was in the requirements, but it would be on event by event basis. We don't have any interest in any.
We do not, we don't have any
Okay, I, I do have a question about food trucks.
Sure.
Are you going to make sure that all of those food trucks, since you're going to be moving them in and out? Are you going to make sure that all of them have the appropriate permits from the town of Arundel?
Yeah, yeah, so you have to go in trucks. So this saves some paperwork, but not all the paperwork, when we understand that. So yeah, you still have to, they're going to have to come in front of the, I believe, the board selection for their permit on, on an event by event basis. This just gives us on the site plan, the layout and
I'm just, I just want to make sure that because it's taken place at Vinegar Hill, Vinegar Hill is responsible for them having the permit.
Yes, understood.
Okay.
Question please. If you know they're supposed to have permits, why haven't they had permits before?
Not aware of any complaints or filings, that's, I, I don't know.
They can't hear you on the speaker, if you want to come, you, or speak up loudly, they can't hear you on the recording.
As far as I know, there was a previous agreement with Sarah Dering was our managing director. And she had, I mean, this is what I was told as one of the purchasing owners, was that she previously had arranged something either with the town or the, the planning board, I don't know who exactly. But to save the trouble of coming in on an event by event basis, they had come to some agreement that they didn't have to do that, that they could put in applications at the beginning of the season. And so I don't know if that was part of the issue, but it's a possibility. That's as, as much as I know. Yeah.
Well, if you know what food trucks you're going to be inviting, or is that some
That'll be an event by event.
That's just event by event, okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, bring them all in at once.
Right, and, and like I said, I think in terms, in terms of, it's going to be very rare where there are three of them on site. It's typically a one, but in talking with Jim and in talking with Lee Jay, it seemed to make more sense to go for this food truck event permit as a whole, as part of the site plan approval, then keep coming back, was one of the, the discussions we had.
Yeah, so the way the food truck portion of the zone ordinance works is that whether it's a one-off event or in a situation like theirs, Motor, Motor City Museum up on Route One is the same way, what they, it's a two-prong approach in the ordinance. You folks need to approve location of food trucks and the allowance of food trucks. But as a food vendor, they also need a license with the select board. And so every time there is an event where the food vendors are going to come in, the vendor themselves needs to come before the select board to get approved. And they are correct, that could change event to event. One event, they may have, you know, three food trucks who are there for a one-off. And then the next event may be three completely different food trucks. And those vendors need to come before the select board prior to that event, get approvals from the select board for that event. You're approving where they will be located on the site.
So Lee Jay, but if you're a food vendor and you have a permit to sell food in the town of Arundel from a mobile venue, doesn't that give you then, doesn't that permit you to go, whether it's to Vinegar Hill or to park outside Hannaford's or, or do you have to come in and get a special?
I think, I think they're site specific. There is nothing that, there's nothing that grants a vendor a food license for the year regardless of where they are. It's a location by location situation.
Got it. Thank you.
Chair? Yes, sir. Just, last time you guys were in here, we had looked at the food truck location, which we moved to. And at that point in time, you had some that weren't meeting the setback requirements. As far as close to your permanent kitchen and, and they have to be so many feet away from that. And you're looking at putting permanent plug form to plug in and stuff. Just keep that in mind when you guys set these guys up, all right? I know you haven't got them on this drawing here.
Well, that's a hard question, is where?
Yeah, where is it?
So the second sheet that you have, because they're small, they don't show up great, but there are three locations that are identified on the plane.
Is F T, the little white thing?
I understood.
I mean, the tiny little pencil thing that says F T?
Says F T.
Yeah, yeah, I did miss it the first time, I apologize. Yeah, that's all, and just, just a reminder, there are some requirements that you got to have, right? As far as the setback, and last time I know they were right up against the buildings and stuff, and it would have been
I think we solved that, but yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just curious about the number of parking spots, if you would increase in the number of
So the the space has not changed. We have shown on the site plan now, if you notice on either, on either page, sort of what will be, I guess, maps out, south of the building, the crushed shell parking space. Those have been there, it's typically where the handicap parking is for, for most events. Those weren't delineated on the last. And then when we had the the surveyor go back and look, there were, and, and meet, look at the spacing for the standards. There was a few extra spots near the center here, which has seventeen eleven, that there are a few extra that could fit when we looked at the actual parking standards. So this is a more accurate, but the biggest change would be the thirteen spaces on the south of the plan that existed, but were never shown.
That will be, will be open park and not just handicap?
No, that's open parking. It's typically designated handicap for indoor events, but it's and we, and we can designate those on, on the plan if needed, but
Okay, so all the areas shown on here are
Yeah.
Now, when, there was, when you were here last time, we talked about when you have a stage or a movie event going on, you, you'll be using up some of the parking spots, so will, will there still be enough spots to meet all the requirements?
Yeah, so short answer is yes. Given the parking ratio needed for those outdoor events, is it, and the capacity that we have for them is significantly less, so we can meet the standards, and we're never going to have overlapping events at the same time. So yes.
So then that brings up the, the, the last question is, is in regards to the, of the septic. But I, could you fill us in on, on progress, is, you're going to be, are you going to be adding capacity or when will that be?
Yeah, so in the application, you'll notice, I believe we included, and if not, we can get it to you. But notice the HHE two hundred, I intended to include it. But yes, we're, we're adding some capacity.
It was, it was.
It was, okay.
And it, it's definitely, you had soil studies done?
Yes, yeah, and that's part of what, how we're meeting soil study standard for, for the site plan, Jim.
There, okay, so that's all clear.
And that's where our capacity, actually, the limitation on capacity also comes from as well. So that's how we, everything sort of dominoes down from that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'll just follow up a little bit on that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to get into any details. But I can tell you that Jim and Brandon and soils folks have had long conversations, I was included in many of them, but to a lesser extent, because I'm not a septic system person per se. But Brandon is, is correct on this particular issue. And we worked many, many hours to both get on the same page and understand what they had in the ground, what would be, what the expansion would get them to, because there was a differentiation of number of gallons per person that was allowed or permitted originally back years ago to what the standard is today. And so it took quite a length of time for us to get to a place of understanding what they had in the ground, what they needed to have out there, and what the new, the updated standards were to allow that. So I can certainly verify for you as well that what they've provided in that respect is accurate. And Jim is, has actually signed off on his permit.
That was, that was one of the, the major obstacles.
That's right, and, and I think we spent many, many hours together trying to get through that.
And now we're just really waiting, we've lost the window with the contractor back in November, and then we've got weather. So digging, so probably we're ready to go, it'll be ready on the ratio before the So
It's kind of hard to play in the snow.
Yeah, so. Okay, thank you.
Just a chair?
Yes.
So I would also like you to codify in your documentation that there's not going to be any overlapping events. So I'd like you to have that language. And I know that there was an issue with serving alcohol from your little hut. Have you worked that out with the state that you can now serve potent potables on site during events? And, or is that still in process?
I believe the outdoor, are, are you referring to the outdoor space?
Yes, there's a little
I believe we, we filed with the state, the extension of the liquor license to the outdoor liquor and how have all signed off. We're good to go until, I think, next year. But yes, that was part of the app, liquor application.
And also in your application, it says your food trucks are not allowed to serve alcohol in any way, shape, or form.
No, they won't have, food trucks aren't allowed to have liquor license, they, you, there's no such thing as a mobile, mobile
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there's just, there's clarity.
Only be in our designated licensed area. And it would be have to be served by the licensee, which would be Vinegar Hill.
So just from my understanding, because I haven't been, I haven't been for a bit, the, the parking area, I understand is, is delineated for that's how many parking spots could be, but they're not marked, except for the gravel there, is that correct? The other part is fields, basically.
It's, it's all
Like it's able to park on it, it's just not
It's all
It's not lined, it's not
It's not lined.
Right, okay.
Like I personally don't know chalk lines.
And then it goes away with the rain, yeah.
Depends on the range, or lawnmower goes over it, or
And it's gone.
So that's why we had, we had Livingston Hughes base it off of the parking standards on the area that, that's
And then your, your screen and your small stage is the same place?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe mark that as well.
Yeah, can I get some, I'd be happy to get some clarity on that, because we sort of had, originally when I was working with DJ, we had three or four different cut sheets for you.
Okay.
It's, it's the small set, I can put more writing, we try to keep it as simple as possible and not clutter up this. And we can either do it as a separate plan, or we can just put small stage slash
Outside entertainment, because you're going to be doing different things on it, you know, having speeches, you're going to be having things.
To is sort of supposed to be achieving is sort of all the outdoor uses generally, try to keep it simple. So we're happy to do however you would like, that makes it
As much detail as possible would be great. That's what I would think.
Could the chair?
Yes.
Only one stage or multiple stages?
Just one stage.
Multiple screens?
It's staying.
Just one stage, and then a screen goes on that stage for the, yeah, it's all used in that scene. And one of the conditions of approval that you'll notice in the application is working with, with Jim and Lee Jay, electric engineer plans and structural engineer plans. The stage is dismantled right now, we'll need to get those done when we reassemble it in the spring. But no problem with that, it's a condition of approval before we get CLO or approval to, to use it.
Any other?
I've got a question for you.
Yeah, Marty.
Where do you have in your parking gear? Spots for motorcycles? Because motorcycles one parking spot can hold several motorcycles. That's why I'm asking, because we went round and round on this prior to a different location years ago. And bikes are bikes, but you don't need one bike taking up a full spot possibly with your capacity of your people.
We don't delineate between, it's a parking spot, a parking spot under the ordinance, I believe.
But I'm just saying you, for your benefit, I'm not trying to be a shit of the month, but I'm just trying to say that, you know, if you had a section down here in Kaysale where a bunch of people coming, that they can put all their bikes together instead of sprawled out all along the way, because
They, they would have
Bikers are very particular about who walks around, okay? And have to spread all over the place.
Marty, they'd have to be careful, because they, they're restricted to the number of people they have, whether they show up in a car or they all show up on motorcycles, they're restricted
I'm just asking one question.
And would you guys anticipate having events that would, would host a large number of
No.
bikes? You're not, you're not catering
No.
I to
They are, they are coming just from a motorcycle ride. Another question is, along the way, I know the answer, but I, but I have it for you. What have you done over the year, being this year, about overcrowding and filling up your parking overflow? You've had different times where your parking lot was full.
Oh, right, and that was where Oh, was that during the fall, best meeting? Not this, so this year in twenty twenty-two, is that what?
No, this year.
Yeah.
Not this year, twenty-two, this is twenty-three.
The only event that I'm aware of recently that had a quite tight parking lot was the Chamber event at the, in the fall, the award ceremony. And they're, they were able to accommodate along the entrance and still
They were parking all the way up the road, all the way up to Route One, almost.
For that event?
For that event. I'm just saying.
And we do anticipate, although we do have permission to use the vet, as I mentioned, it's, we meet the standards of
But nobody was in there.
Understood.
I'm just saying, they, they were jammed all the way around on both sides of the road.
Yeah, so when that would, where it happened, you were, if, if, I, my, again, I wasn't there that night, but I would say that that was likely a case where we couldn't sell our tickets and weren't able to, and it's, it's exactly the number of vehicles that would show up. We did not have some, you'd be able to direct people to, but I mean, conjecture, but I think this is what happened. There wasn't a person directing people to the man lot that night, almost certainly. And people, and apartment on the road, which is not what we, we saw today, when we saw it, then then we, and seen it on the early, to an idea of but I mean, we shouldn't have that issue at any point, not in different
And if you take a look at sheet two, and we can talk about whether or not this should stay on the, on the plan notes or not. The, the, for the site plan purposes, although we do meet the standard, we've got a note seven for additional partnerships will be available if additional outdoor spaces are needed. And then note eight, security and parking services will be located at the entrances of the parking lots as needed. And then the thirty-five additional spots, so we, we've acknowledged that and recognized that. We don't, to meet the standard, we don't technically need those, but we're happy to leave that, those notes on the plan. Lee Jay had requested that, that they come off, because we're, we meet the standard, we don't technically need them, but happy to leave that, we do have the agreement.
So part, part of that conversation or that discussion is that if that note stays on the plan, then the way the ordinance is structured, they need to provide as part of their approval, they need to They need to provide a lease agreement with the man vet.
I would. We argue that it would only be, we would only need that lease if we were trying to use it to meet the standard. We don't need to meet the standard. We can use it as a. Note that we have access to.
Issue though it is. If you can't plan when you won't be meeting the standard, it happens. So you'd have to have that immediately available. Which means you'd have to have some type of agreement ahead of time for the season. Which.
And someone to monitor that to not happen again, because like you said, if you had known, you would have known, but if there was someone on site. That would have been directing it.
Right, generally speaking.
Right.
I don't think the Chamber of Commerce, like with tickets or so, we show up and have a party.
Right.
So Brandon, we had a situation with Motorland. A similar situation where they had a lot. Uh, either across the street on Route one or next to them. Jamie, do you recall?
It was right next to them.
And but they without, they needed an agreement.
Right, and I think.
Overflow.
The standard um, and I'm trying to find it myself. Was if we if we could use a lease or. Somebody else's to meet the standard. We we meet the standard. Now we've had. The standard is, you know, one for every, I think it's on the plan. Three seats or three people.
Right.
If we have an event like we did that that evening where everybody's coming after work and, you know, the the assumption is blown out of the water where. Everyone drove themselves, that one to three ratio doesn't work. We, I think we probably could have used that overflow with no problem. We we have that agreement. Um. The um.
However, those two notes, they sound great, but they're they're really not legal. There's they, we have it, we can use it whenever we need to. It's someone else's property that you need. You need uh.
Why is no data problem? They're telling you that if they're gonna have, they're gonna have people posted at the entrances and tell them to block on the.
Okay, number seven, I'm sorry.
Number seven, yeah.
Number eight for all of the seven, the parking lots as needed, so.
So you get rid of number seven, make number eight, seven.
But even. Parking lot as needed, this as needed, it means they have to have something.
Oh, he's gonna have security and parking services as needed at the entrances.
Oh, I see, I see.
Right, so get rid of seven and make eight, seven.
I'm getting to the point where I'm expecting a lot of people. I'm at max. I'm gonna direct them where to park and I'm gonna make sure I'm at the entrance and say, don't park on the road. You're gonna get a ticket. If you're told.
That has to be planned ahead of time, not just a no here, but a place.
And and I think. We we should be able to to handle that. Um.
But it wasn't. That's what I'm saying. We're trying to put it into something that it wouldn't happen again. Learn from past, go forward, that's what I'm saying. Be more proactive to that. Have a staff member call you and say, hey, by the way, we need some help and then direct traffic versus it just being a.
And that's the point.
Something that was.
Acknowledging the issue and trying to provide a solution for certain.
Lots of side conversations, guys.
What he's saying, which actually makes sense. Oh, I'm sorry, we're having a. Sorry about that. What Brandon is saying, Rich was looking for an ordinance about um, there's some language in our. Ordinances about planning for offsite parking. But what Brandon is saying is because they meet the standard. Um, they don't necessarily have to arrange for offsite parking.
It's five, well, seven is the off you parking and loading, shared parking. Um.
Nine twelve seven?
Uh, five, well, five, one. It's up number seven. Um, because you have to show that it meets the. Um. Because I think that's the section I don't. There's a specific section about the lease, but. Um.
Yeah, that's what I've been looking for.
You are having auxiliary line.
Five twelve seven.
Shared parking.
Five point twelve point. One point four. Offsite parking.
Right.
Parking offsite parking for all land uses shall be located on the same lawn as the principal building or facility. If the parking spaces cannot be provided on the same lot as the principal use. The planning board may permit the spaces to be located on other property within five hundred feet of the main entrance to the principal use. And if it and a pedestrian walkway provided direct off-street access to the principal use. Such parking areas shall be held under the same ownership or lease. As the uses served as evidence of such control or lease shall be required. Arrangements for parking on leased land shall not be acceptable for meeting the minimum requirement required parking provisions of this ordinance. Unless the leasing is specifically given the option of renewing the lease indefinitely.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. You have to have the lease if you're going to use that parking lot. And that means you have to have the lease now when we.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I think they would need to have that if their use, if they couldn't demonstrate on site. That they had the spaces for their proposed use. What I'm hearing is that they. Do have the spaces for their proposed use and the limitations. However, there could be circumstances. Like somebody comes in and parks. And takes up two spaces for every car that comes in for whatever reason. And there's a contingency plan to have offsite parking. Somewhere else as a good name.
So there is another way to address this.
Because, oh, hold on, Lijay, because my, what I'm, where I'm hearing of the ordinance is that. The off-street parking as. As required and laid out in the ordinance, they wouldn't necessarily comply with. Because of the distance, if I remember correctly.
It it, yeah, it has to be within five hundred feet.
Right.
They don't, unless you use valet or something like that, that I imagine.
A whole different, you they could, they could have a remote parking area, Hannaford, let's just say. And bus people there.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And we and that wouldn't have to require an off-site parking type of. The same way as if they've got the. If they've got the the spaces on the plan for the use. But for some reason, people. Don't like the space. And they want to go and park at man somewhere that's not on the road. They've got the ability to do that. And especially if these guys have. A structure set up that would direct them to go park at man. Go park at at the vacant, you know. Whatever Jay Brothers or whatever, no, not Jay Brothers, the the store across the street at the at the light.
But there needs to be something put in place on a regular basis as a as a failsafe is what my point is. It has to be written out.
I'm hearing that they have, but it's not necessarily a. A statutory plan requirement. I mean, I sort of agree with Lijay in that the. Thirty five additional spaces, while they're they're nice from a site plan approval standpoint, I I don't think they actually. Are legitimate.
Right, no, I'm agreeing with you on that. I just think there should be something stated that man is agreeing with you. Do you mean there may should be something saying, maybe just a letter or something saying, saying, hey, we let.
I have a letter and we're happy to. But it shouldn't go on a site plan.
I know, but I'm just saying like to see it so that with this discussion wouldn't be can be like, okay.
Well, to be fair, VJ asked for it to be removed completely, so I didn't add it to the application. They do have a letter from man. If you if you want that for part of the public hearing, we can put it back in. Um, I was trying to acknowledge that in the the notes of the site plan, which. Was sort of the the record.
Let's put it this way, showing talent.
Well, the reason, the reason I mean, I I requested it to be removed was simply because they. Didn't have a an agreement, a lease agreement as the ordinance calls for. So it says, and they said, well, we really don't need that space. So I said, then let's remove the note from the plan. There is a reverse way to to address this issue and that what I heard as part of the discussion tonight. Was that. The chamber event, which seems to be the event that kind of. Um, brought notice to this situation. Was not a limited ticket sales event. And while the chamber does great things and has, you know, really good. Um, business activities. The board could condition every event to have a limited. Ticket sales event because they are limited in their seating capacity. Per this ethic system design. So if you looked at the whole, um, rather than having an unticketed event. Being the sale of X number of tickets. You just tell the chamber and everybody else that ticket sales are limited to X.
But the that the problem, VJ, isn't so much in why you were giving, the issue is on those events whereby everybody comes after work. That one to three ratio that's in the the standard sort of. Goes up. So if we can still have, you know, the two hundred, our seating capacity, I think it's two fifty or two sixty. That's the number, that's the number that we can sell based on the fire code. But if everybody brought up. Their own car. Where nobody's gonna meet that standard. So. So um, to, I don't think creating a a requirement that creates a ticketed event. Solve, this sort of solves that that problem is we meet the standard. Uh, if it's easier to not create confusion, we can remove the note. Um, as Lijay suggested, because we we meet the one to three over the one to three ratio. Um.
A question for you, was that was that a ticket event?
No.
The Chamber of Commerce.
I think what what. I think it's triggering all this is it actually has happened. So so in. Chances are it will happen again. So what what can be done to mitigate that? You have. Make sure you have a parking attendant there that I go to the end. Making sure that.
Yeah, number eight is done.
Were sold out and it's not one degree, but it's everybody telling you to do a car. We're pushing that limit. So now we need to make sure that the party had to direct people. To the garage and plus and are required, but are available to us that have an agreed, if you have a letter from man as well.
I think.
You don't think you have a contingency plan.
Where they would fall due to to know that that's coming, so.
And if there was a non-rated event.
Because maybe similar, what I would. What I would maybe propose, similar to in the packet, we provided a sort of a noise mitigation plan, creating a separate. Sort of general parking mitigation plan that would become part of the application that we can include the letter from man. We can discuss. How we're gonna tell when we think we're gonna need it. A simple one-page parking mitigation plan and and probably take it off the notes of the site plan and and put it into that. That document.
Think that would be really helpful. A lot of my task is is to only prove something that's gonna be safe and not not cause an issue, so.
Um, and there were plenty of, there were many, many events there that did not have any problems with the last two or three years.
There were many events there, yes.
We have both sides of the street. I mean, uh. And everybody's coming home because that's a. Down, quick way down to the port or whatever else night. And you got four corners right there. I know I have the pass at every night going home. I mean, that's why. You know, I wasn't out looking, but I mean, if you're going by there. You know, usually the parking lot's not overflowing or anything else. But in this case, it has happened in the past. Also, not necessarily this year, but it has happened. You know, so I mean, uh. Because there was no traffic, you know, you didn't have like the sheriff telling him, okay, we're gonna go, you know, or anything else. You know, because sometimes if people go, will tell you, yeah, the way that you're gonna go park anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we can pull that together ahead of a public hearing, no problem.
So. Question to the chair?
Yes.
Um, one of your waivers was for erosion and septic control plan. Uh, is there any other than the um. Septic installation, the other changes to the site or site work that would be going on?
No. Other than um, grounding for electrical for the stage, but no, no actual groundwork.
Yes, go ahead. So uh, I don't see anybody complaining about the fact that Vinegar Hill is going. I don't see anybody complaining from the public here. Uh, about Vinegar Hill operating and expanding their services. And of course, we've gotten several letters. Over the last twenty four hours of support. But um, I was just wondering if there's been any grumbling from the butters. Uh, because I live on the Senate Road way down, so I'm unaffected by what goes on in Vinegar Hill. Although I do pass you all the time. And I've heard that there are some people who are, and there's always a few, but some people who are not so happy.
I'll defer, let me correct, I, there was even in the packet that we provided. One, I think, director butter, um, and it was, I think, in the thick packet. That we we talked to directly and uh, have addressed and they appreciate the reach out. And I think we've got a. A a good relationship. That's the only one I'm aware of that. So. And I can't remember her name and I. But it's in the packet.
Yeah, I assume if they were very unhappy, they would.
Yeah, the first page of that PDF, which again, I'll try to print out for the public hearing. So we have the full for you, for you all.
Also. Also, in the past, what we mentioned about noise and everything else. You have somebody, when you have the outside band, who can. Who's, what's the word you need?
Monitor.
Monitor, yeah, licensed monitor.
So we've got in the in the packet, there's a whole noise mitigation plan. That we have um, a profession. I don't know. Yeah, professional grade, decimal meter, um. We have specific times where they uh, staff goes around and tests the decimal uh, the readings from certain locations. Um, and then for all events and. Um, I believe in the plan, it's not, unless it's a movie because of the darkness, but then the the decimals. Are decreased, the volume is decreased at at that nine thirty, ten o'clock time. But we make sure the bands all end. Early enough to to meet that ten o'clock.
Question, someone, so you're watching a movie?
That's how they, that's how they've been operating in the past, yeah.
Okay.
To meet that, to make sure we don't exceed. It it is what it is. I mean, we want to make sure we. So the, sorry, they, so for those that are in their cars. It, there's a Bluetooth, not a Bluetooth, but there's a radio signal, so almost like a drive-in. So those that are in their cars can turn it up themselves. It's really for those that are sitting outside on blankets or in lawn chairs that the sound will go down and it's probably not that noticeable frankly, because. They're so close to the speakers.
So I need some help understanding where anybody's gonna be able to sit on the ground. Outside of their car and actually see the screen on a movie.
All of these look like they're gonna be sitting in between parked cars.
No, so. Again, we tried to simplify the site plan. Um, so where I'm, I'm. That we're gonna be back to four or five cut sheets. Um, yeah. So. On this plan, and again, we I, we can get you a different cut sheet. Where it says on page two, the pedestrian area.
Yeah.
On that first, that is that parking is taken away. That becomes sort of. In the very front blankets behind it, sort of chairs. And then the cars are parked. In the sort of um. That second round of. Did you bring the others? I I think I have them too.
So we have a series of.
Uh, those are the, those were, those are the ones that surrogate. Um, I've, we had. Um, Livingston Hughes.
No, that's, your your explanation is fine. I was just.
Yeah.
Cars all over the place.
I think I've got the ones that you walked up. They live the.
So we have originally. We can go back, it's no problem. So for outdoor movies. For um, what we call. When you see areas reserved for standing only, areas reserved for people sharing blankets. Um, ignore, we could use other notes. Experiences and then, so we did one for that and then we did one for. The, this is the guy in the movies where the dirt team, shared blankets. Sixteen contacts they sit and then delineated how the parking was, was limited further. So we're happy to go back to these separate sheets and back.
You have a spot where no mosquito?
Absolutely. In your car. We're happy to go, we. Try to simplify, we're happy to go back, we're happy to, sort of break it out further, um, I think. Um, and I, I, I didn't push too hard on you, because I, simpler is always better, but maybe in this case it's. Better for you to, to see those sort of more differentiated areas for the different type of events.
I think it would be.
No, that's the, that's, we're, we're happy to do that, it's. It won't take much for them to, it won't take much for them to. Yeah, and the idea was this is everything that could happen outdoors and understood and happy to. And it will, so. Or, and I'll, I'll delineate, I've got a, I've known already, um, depending on the type of event. So for the indoor events where that gravel is, we'll be the handicap.
Right.
Um, for movies, there's specific handicap. Parking crowd, yeah, well, Mark, it's, yes, it will be. Yeah, understood, yep.
I, I'd like to go back to the septic. I, I don't see any evidence of outdoor porta potties or anything, they're all, for all events, they'll all be using the indoor element.
Yes.
That was part of the discussion we had had, um, in dealing with, with trying to figure the whole thing out. And, um. Dealing with the state, they do not actually accept porta potties as a, um. Public facility on a, based on a, like, use, by use basis.
Yeah.
So, um, we tried to stay away from that and that's we're making sure that the, the revised system can handle. Everybody, Jim has done a, uh, head count, if you will, on the number of people. That, um, can legally be, um, on the facility. And looked at, um, water closets and sinks and the whole bit, all of the male and female section. To make sure that they comply with the number of, of facilities, um, that they have, then they do.
Not, so they already do, they won't add any.
Correct.
And now as part of, yeah, we did not want to do anymore. Because that, they did a pretty extensive renovation before the current owners took over a number of years ago, so. Um, that's, and that you'll, that's noted on the, um, something application.
So, uh, Rick's question for maybe the you or the Vijay. How does, um, what these guys are proposing from a sound standpoint compared to the requirements? And of other noise-producing, uh, venues, so to speak. In that same part of town. Are they, are they held to the same standard?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes, 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 there's. There's, um.
I think, I think noise generated from a site would be whether, whether it coming interior or exterior.
There are standards in the ordinance that tell us what the decibel level can be, for example, by nine o'clock in a zone, in a particular zone. And that's what they're held to. I, I hear what you're, no pun intended, I hear what you're saying. Um, I suspect though, that the outdoor activities are more apt to have. Always carried than the indoor.
You don't, you won't, you will not have the attenuation. From the wall.
Correct.
But if you had an indoor space that was wide open to the outdoors. In certain times of the year.
Right.
The decibels, the, the sound wouldn't be attenuated and that sound would be able to carry.
Yes.
And all I'm inquiring about is to ensure that the same standards are applied.
They are. I should say that the same standards are applied across the board. Whether the applicant follows those standards, I can't tell you.
So I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight about a number of issues. Um, I'm not sure that, that the additional or the information that you're asking for. Necessarily negates, um, a completeness issue. I think what you're asking for is information that goes above and beyond. Um, if you look at my memo, I certainly have gone through the checklist requirements. And suggested that it has been submitted or they're asking for waivers. Um, and again, as I always do, um, I think I've done it with you folks, I do it everywhere. There is a difference between is the application complete and have they provided the information you're looking for? If they submit something, um, that the application requests, it's complete. The bigger issue is, does it satisfy your need for information which may go above and beyond the submittal requirement? And I think that's what most of your discussion has been tonight with the applicants, items that go above and beyond.
So we wouldn't make those requests conditional per se?
We could.
Um, I wouldn't make them conditional, but I certainly would make sure that, that when they come back for the public hearing, then Brandon. Um, I think has heard you loud and clear, um, will provide that information, whether it's on revised plans. Or in a letter addressing those issues. And if he forgets any, I certainly have been taking your minutes, so I can, um, go back and indicate, we need something to address this or address that.
Okay.
I will move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second.
Motion was made. Motion was made by Jamie, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? All those in favor of declaring the application complete? Is there anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Now remember, just because it's complete doesn't mean that we're going to approve it. It just means we've got everything we need.
Now you can set a date for if you feel you need to have another sidewalk.
We need, we need to have a sidewalk, not another one.
Well, we had one scheduled at one time, but there was a mishap.
We had one and nobody showed up.
And. And, and the date for your public hearing, um, then we can move the application forward for that part of the process.
I think we should go through the waivers first. And, and make it, you know, how do we feel about the waivers? This will help them, because if we, if we turn something down, then they're going to have to get some more stuff together before the public hearing.
That's fine.
The first waiver that they're asking for, uh, is for the property, property boundary survey. They've given us a site plan, uh, normally they would have to give us a full survey.
Yeah, I think that if it's an existing site, we're not adding any buildings or, or even parking spots. I, I think that's reasonable.
We've done that in the past, we've accepted it.
They're, they're asking for a waiver.
I move that we accept the waiver on that particular item.
Motion has been made by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn, to waive the, uh, property boundary survey. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. The next one is the topographic survey showing the, uh, there are no additional structures. Other than the stage. And I have a question about the stage. If I can find it again. Probably can't. It was one of the notes that I read.
Yeah, we can, um, add a, a whole cut sheet on it, no problem, yep.
That way, we're not surprised and you're not surprised.
Absolutely.
I don't know if it's on this one. No, no, much, much based on that afterwards, uh.
What is it you're looking for?
Oh, I, I have a note here, uh, submit, the submittal of the structural plans for the stage must be obtained from the CEO. Prior to the use of the stage, and this is a condition of approval.
And that's, uh, both, as I mentioned, we need, um, the structural engineering stamp plans and the electrical engineering. Because the stage is dismantled, we're, we're, we're working on getting those contractors lined up, but we can't get those.
Yes, correct. That's not going to affect the waiver.
Right.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, right? We need a motion in a second.
Uh, so moved.
What, what is the motion which?
About the.
The, no, the, the waiver on the site plan. Oh, I'm sorry, there's not one, you put a note there, it confused me. It's just, there's a, there's a note on the site plan location and.
If you review my memo, um, I've got those pretty well spelled out.
Yeah, I think we covered, I think we covered that under.
Were there any waivers, um, that you felt were problematic, Vijay?
No, no.
So. I agree, I'll second that.
Motion was made by Susan Senate and seconded by Jamie to accept all the waivers as requested. Is there any discussion? No, I would, I would say that I don't think that that's appropriate, because we've got a lot of waivers.
So, so.
We, we can, we can do it.
In my opinion, the whole, the whole discussion is moot because we've accepted the application as complete.
I, I wasn't going to get. But I, I completely. I completely agree.
Okay. No, no, I would, I would, okay, I see what you're saying, never mind. Yeah.
Motion on the table.
Yep. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Remember, we went into this, we were going to look at the waivers.
Great outset to this process.
Thank you.
Now.
We need to do a sidewalk in the middle of February, is that what I'm hearing?
Listen, you said it was going to be sunny Saturday and it was.
I can't, I can't make it this week, but I can make it next week. I can't do the twenty-first.
I, I won't be able to next week. Hang on, I'm looking at the weather.
I can make it either day. So we need three or four.
Thursday, Friday looks.
Close Thursday into Friday, right?
Yes.
I think three to five.
When they are going to plow parking lot.
No, it's gravel.
Cause it's all gravel.
Then we're closed.
Do it on the twenty-eighth, it'll give the snow time to melt.
So, yeah, and I also. I also want to make sure that we don't have to advertise this, but we have to notify abutters. And so we want to make sure that we have time, so if you're putting it out. Sidewalk out to like the weekend twenty-eighth or whatever, then chances are we're going to be the second meeting. In February, which would be better for Ann, to make sure that we can get the notices out and everything on time.
Is that when you want the sidewalk?
No, sidewalk anytime between now, now and whenever, but the, the date for the public hearing.
So Susan and I can, uh, meet on Saturday? Is there anybody else who can meet?
I can be there Saturday.
Saturday.
Should we do nine o'clock again? Can you do that, guys?
The twenty-first, we're talking the twenty-first to the twenty, this Saturday?
Yeah. That way at least you get into the calendar and it's.
Nine AM.
Nine AM on Saturday. So I move that we. I move that we schedule a sidewalk on Saturday at nine AM.
Motion has been made by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie to have a sidewalk Saturday, the twenty-first of January at nine AM. But is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
The added benefit of bringing you to that part of town to stop in the Holy Donut?
They have, they are. They are, I don't know, they're out.
So you guys have it? Nine AM, I will be.
Okay. Fair enough.
And are we, are we looking at the public hearing for the twenty-first of February?
Yeah, so I guess I'll make a motion that we, we have one on the twenty-first. The next second.
That's February, no?
Yes, yeah, it would be February.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Will be not accounted for February vacation. Well, let's, let's pick another date.
We could, we could try on the seventh, I'm just not sure that gives Ann a lot of time to get the public hearing, you know, this is.
March seventh.
March seventh would be.
Yeah, that would be the next available meeting.
Yep.
So my motion will be for March seventh. Public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green to have a public hearing on March seventh. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay.
We've got our marching orders, we'll see you all Saturday, or many of you Saturday morning.
Yes.
Who else is going to make it there? Jamie, Susan. And, okay.
I may, I don't know, I gotta go check.
Done a lot of work in the last half a year, so.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
Yep, good job.
Be else for me?
Yep, terrific.
Thank you.
Nine o'clock.
Yes, East Coast, Eastern Standard Time.
Well, you know, we started the day with the agenda. I read some of the agenda. And I put the event in someplace.
I don't believe so, but.
Well, you can have it.
I can look.
You can never tell in my room. Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, next item, American iron and metal major conditional use renewal application. A determination of. Next item, American Iron and Metal Major Conditional Use Renewal Application: A Determination of Completeness. It's an application for the renewal of an expired conditional use permit. For forty-three thousand square foot solid waste disposal facility. And metal recycling yard located on a twenty-two point nine acre parcel. Located at twenty-two forty-four Portland Road, tax map twelve lot nine in the BI District. American Iron and Metal is the owner and applicant and Drew. I'm not going to attempt to pronounce your last name, Drew. Uh, of Haley Ward Incorporated is the applicant. Polahowski?
Yeah.
Wow. Sometimes I get lucky. Okay. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us. So, uh, as Rich said, my name is Drew Olowowski with Haley Ward, um, I'm representing AM um, for the. Renewal of a conditional use permit for a solid waste facility at twenty-two forty-four Portland Road. Um, this site previously received approval back in twenty nineteen. Um, and it did just expire last month. We are looking for the renewal, as Rich said, um, since the previous renewal in twenty nineteen, there have been no changes with the site. So we are hoping this, this will be a fairly straightforward um, approval process. There were a couple of conditions of approval in twenty nineteen, um, one of, I think the biggest of which was. That you guys requested a um, charity bond for the closing of the site. Um, I don't think we ever provided that after that original meeting, but we did include it in your packets tonight. That bond also has expired as of now, and we are working to renew that. Um, we also did increase the price of that bond since the original one just still count for inflation. And yeah, with that, we'll be happy to take any questions you guys might have.
I have a question, because I was on that sidewalk in two thousand nineteen. And the fence between the pond. And uh, Route one and the abutting property was. Really dilapidated, and I think they were going to repair it, do you know? If that happened? Okay, so it's secure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Similar to the conditional use renewal we had last week, first order of business would be to do a sidewalk.
You do a sidewalk.
Ten o'clock Saturday?
That I won't go.
I might.
Yeah.
I'd rather do both of them.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Messing up two Saturdays.
I can go.
Well, three Saturdays.
I'll go.
You guys support that?
Is there somebody that can be there or?
Would you be available tomorrow on Saturday?
Yes.
Do it the twenty eighth at nine o'clock.
Not doing anything else this time.
Twenty eight, twenty eight.
It's a good thing about February.
Right.
Twenty eighth at nine o'clock?
Yep.
That sounds good.
We need a motion.
Got a motion.
That's okay.
Who, who made the motion, Jamie?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, who seconded?
Actually, I seconded it.
Motion, motion made by Jamie, seconded by Tom to have a sidewalk on the twenty eighth of January at nine AM. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We'll see you at nine o'clock on the twenty eighth.
And do we want to set a date for the public hearing?
Why not?
Probably the same night.
Yeah.
As, well, you could actually do it on the early.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do this, we could.
Twenty first of. February?
Yeah, it's twenty first.
It's, it's school vacation week, that's why they couldn't do it, but the other people couldn't do it.
Okay.
So it's school vacation week.
My kids are all out of school, I don't, my grandkids are out of school at this point.
I think that we make a public hearing on the twenty first of February.
Second.
Motion by Susan Senate, seconded by Paul Green to have a public hearing on the twenty first of January.
February.
Okay, twenty first of February, which is better? I don't want to work on Sunday anyway. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Who was the second on that?
Paul.
Paul, okay.
Nine o'clock in the morning.
For both at nine.
Nine for both.
Yep.
That is before amen, where I think the uh. Sidewalk we did for this time. When I first started the board, had to have been one of the coldest. Couldn't write, but the pen was freezing up the whole time, and the whole, it literally come out.
Well, we'll hold you responsible, so with your motion. You need a motion on this. For it to be claimed complete.
Well, you should. Yeah, uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Chairman.
There are, there are some waivers, so if we, if we go, hang on, if we're going to vote on this for completeness, we have waivers to address beforehand. I may be slow, but I'll learn. The drainage. Look, uh, has not changed from the prior approval, and they're seeking a waiver of having to provide that. For us. And a delineation of all existing. And proposed public and private easements, there are no easements, so they'd like a waiver on that one as well. That's it?
I move for the accept the waivers as requested. Oh, sorry, Marty.
Go ahead.
Question is, over the past, you've had different testing ponds than everything else on site. Has all that been turned to the town? Or is that still all just goes to the state and then?
Um, I checked with our staff, would be those environmental testings, and I don't believe they sent that to the town yet, it's only gone to the, the DEB.
Because the last time when it got approved, they said they were going to. Send it, I think, to the town. And. It's been these couple of years, and wanted to know why it hasn't been sent then.
I believe that request was just if um, soil tests were taken in the pond area, which I don't believe that there's been a need to do any of those.
Well, there was water testing. I think also too, wasn't there? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the reason why we didn't send that over, but we do have all those reports ready, and we can send them if needed.
Because I think. This time, or last time it was done, because it was requested the time before that. And we were trying to update it to the last time it was done. And if it hasn't been done from there, and this is like the third or fourth time when we requested it, it hasn't been done.
I can make sure it was done. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm the environmental advisor.
Okay.
So I will make sure we need to get all.
I'm just, I'm just saying. Over the past. I mean, we don't usually have a lot of places that. Require it. But that's why I ask, because I don't go in the office and go looking. Everything else, it's, you know.
It'd be good for us to have it, again, as much of the last people that have it speaking for the public hearings to move.
Yeah, so as part of the packet that you submitted, um, one of the conditions of approval, condition number four was. Any test results of pond water or sediment. Will be provided to the town planner alone, the facility accepting the material. I was not the town planner back then, so I'm also new to your situation. So if you do have any um, water, water quality testing information, just get it into us, please.
Sure.
Keep it on the platform.
Yeah, I'll send those right over.
So that sounds like if that. Pond was having to be. Riddled or, you know, dug out for some reason.
Yep.
Make sure there's no concentrated metal.
Correct.
So do you not have to set up? But a couple of six years in February, we ran the whole con, like I. I've. Water readings, I believe, have come back.
Yeah.
Below the hundred millimeter. Stress hole. So. Definitely all going to do that. Today. Um, but it has been done on both ponds also. Last six.
Yeah, so if you can just gather that stuff.
Yeah.
Make it obvious before the public hearing and get it into us.
Oh, oh, I was going to say Susan has made a.
Wait, I, I have a question for her.
Okay.
I, I thought of something while they were talking. How much is the charity bond for now that it's been bumped up?
It was two hundred and sixty-five thousand, I believe we were directed to raise it by three percent. By the town manager.
Okay.
I forgot the exact number.
That's curious.
Okay. There, there was a motion made by Susan Roth to accept the waivers as requested. Was there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Paul Green. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
I don't think we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that.
Susan Senate made a motion to deem the application complete, Susan Roth seconded it. Any discussion?
As long as we have. Those tests. Before the public hearing.
Marty, we, we can deem the application complete, if we don't get the test by the public hearing, we can always vote to deny the application. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Good, we'll look forward to seeing you with the sidewalk.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda. Is for us to hear from the town planner.
Yes, um, keep it a clean. Um, first is that we had some. Um, quick email discussion regarding that change to the bylaws that we discussed. I think everybody agreed that um, calendar day was. And and Ann corrected that it is calendar days that we use for all of our other. Um, business, so um, we'll make sure that little change occurs. And I think we ought to, you don't need a public hearing or anything, but it'll be on your next agenda. So that you can formally vote on it to change the bylaws to address that.
Well, I think it's in addition to the bylaws. And I didn't think it was in the bylaws of.
It's not in the bylaws now, but it's going to be amended to one of the sections.
Yeah, but the section that it, that, where it would be amended, says that new applications have to be in fourteen days before. This, this is, this does not apply to new application.
That is correct.
This, this applies to ongoing, so it's not a change, it's an addition.
Yes, that's, that's fine. Point on words, but that's fine. It's amending that section to include this change. Um, the other, the other.
Yeah, yeah, come on, Jamie.
Don't leave, I do have Solari's revised plans. So I need to have you sign those before you walk out the door. Um, other than that, I don't have any additional information for you tonight.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done.